But even at that point, because I was working for, uh, advocacy for others, not just my own kids or others. And so I started taking, doing, building.
Washing hands too.
And that too. Oh, she was a, she was a journalist anyway, so.
Mr. Neville?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I remember we, cause we went to that leadership for talking because we were just starting.
So you think it's good?
Right?
And, uh, yeah. And so, you know, what I did, I was.
Thank you. I'm a politician.
Not yet.
But just really, a lot of those, a lot of those people, and I agree with them.
Wow.
I'm, I'm fine for me. Hey, he's giving over ten thousand. There's no way.
Oh, cannoli? Yeah. They go like Italian pastries.
They look good.
There are little deals, you fry them on these little metal things and then you fill them. It's like ricotta cheese and, uh, what do you call it? Powdered sugar, cheddar chips. Yeah, they're good.
She didn't get it from the.
Yeah, cause I got one kid that likes to cook that kind of stuff, so. We always find stuff that's, she never cooked.
Do you think you're gonna go to that conference on adventure?
Uh, yes. I thought I already registered for it. If they don't show up.
It's in the middle.
It's time for registration.
We gotta go, yeah. But that's just.
Well, I did, I did a senior. Yes. And so I didn't have any day to do that. Good. And I said, Lord, we should.
Morning, how are you? Doing well?
Were you on the call? Show up, pass up the other day.
One point seven eight. I'm prepared. That won't be there, and my target is going up to. Or in Havens Reserve. Why do they know?
Yes.
Because he's, he's got staff.
We need an action.
And our range is.
One of those days.
Starting out to be.
Okay. Please join me in the flag, please. My pleasure. To the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you see my text message?
No.
Okay.
All right, Eric, you are out.
Good morning.
Morning.
Have a couple permits here for you to sign. One's on the, uh, culvert being put in, other one's, uh, access use for utility company. Um, according to the sheets, it's supposed to be signed by the commission. So I see that however you guys want to do it. I'm not sure. It's the first time for me on using them, so I'm not sure exactly how the whole.
You probably.
I think there's a back page.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be two places.
Is there two?
They want one for us to approve and one to sign when it's done.
Okay.
But I think, Eric, unless it's changed.
It should be the same form that.
Yeah, there's one approval, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to read this to them?
You can, yeah.
Okay, we ready? We have an application for permit for utility construction from Heartland Real Electric, which is out of Gerard, Kansas. Electric primary. Let me see. Are they boring, Eric, or did it say, or?
I think they're cutting.
Cutting, okay.
I believe it's on the, there's a diagram.
Got a map.
Map right there.
This would be 242nd Terrace and Xavier Road. Looks like they're going nine hundred seventy-five feet on the north side of the road. So I make a recommendation, we approve this application.
I second.
Paul Faber.
Aye.
Question carries.
This for entrance culvert?
Entrance culvert, yep.
Have an application from Brad and Stacy Wright, 1175 255th Street, for a new entrance culvert as a resident.
Or maybe an extension, I'm not sure.
Extension?
Yeah.
Either one.
Either one of them.
I make a motion, we approve this request?
Second.
Any discussion? Paul Faber.
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries.
All right.
We don't need that sign on that one, do we?
I'm not sure.
I think so. No, no.
Mr. Harris, here's your.
Thank you.
Asphalt sheet we went over the other day.
That makes sense a little bit, help?
Makes sense. I actually have a employee that was in on that last year.
Good.
Who is out right now, um, evaluating our roads and.
Good.
And putting a number to them and.
Can I ask who that is?
It would be Justin Bauer.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Good man.
Yes, very good employee. Um, while we're talking that, do you want to go ahead and set a time for a work session or do we want to wait another week or two to set a work session on our?
So you say you're going out and doing some looking at the condition of the roof?
We're out evaluating the condition, yes.
So we can set a time to talk to Labor in February.
Okay.
Before, before the meeting, don't you think?
Yes, we, you'll be ready?
I, we should be.
Yeah.
I, I hope to be.
Yeah. We're gonna do this a different time or regular meeting?
Oh, it'll probably be this time.
Yeah, I'd recommend that. Uh, that's after it's done.
Oh.
It's been a lot of fair apart February, the last week, uh, we meet on the 23rd, so 24th, 25th, 26th, we have a court session.
That's, you guys set the date and we'll be ready.
So, uh, hold on, contract up to those dates, and then next week we'll pick the date and what.
Okay.
All right.
Say them again, February 24th?
It'll be the 35th, and Saturday will be 24th, 25th, and 26th.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and then on this extension one, there is a place for you.
Is there?
For commissioners to.
Oh, front page, okay.
Yep. While you're writing that down, kind of go down through, heavy rains, just so you know, we had a couple bridges that, three or four areas, we had to put barricades up. Um, water's back down now. Couple of them had logs actually washed out on the middle of the bridges, low water crossings. Um, and those are off the road now, and the barricades are picked up this morning, so just letting you know that. It was more out, uh, around Hackberry, uh, Union Town area, kind of out, out there. The guard rail on 215th, uh, north of the range, uh, is, is up, back up, so, uh.
You're gonna get it put in for less, less than $1,000?
We got it put in for less than $11,000, and the guy's really done well, and we had it done in about, well, it was less than a day, so about three-fourths of a day, they had it installed, so they've done an outstanding job with that.
It looks good.
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 But nothing ever happened.
Good. Um, calling for winter weather again, so we are out brining today. Um, hopefully we'll scared away and end up and get nothing, but don't know. We'll see what happens. Elm Creek, I know previously we had talked about the, uh, we had an area out there on the Shelter House on the north end, um, east side, where we had a large piece of rock granite that was falling out. Um, having an individual that's finishing that work, um, this week, I believe he may be done, depends on the weather and what have you, so had to get that taken care of. Worked with Chad last week on, uh, potholes out here. Looks like we may have to do some more work on that. Um, also looking at putting together a cost estimate on what it would be for the parking and curb and gutter on the rest of the parking areas around, around the courthouse, when you get that back from him, and we have a chance to sit down and visit about it, then I'll bring it to you guys and let you know what we find out. You had said the sidearm mower, we have the sidearm mower ready to mow out at the lake. It's moved to the airport, so I just gotta work that out with Chad when he's ready to.
Thank you.
To do that. Um, give you an update on the crusher. We're now waiting on the turbo to come in. There's been a little bit of COVID and some other foreseen deals on getting it, but hopefully we will have it here and they will be working on the, uh, getting the crusher back up and going latter part of this week, so just give you an update on that. Um, landfill, we did sell the scrap metal, got $3,000, $3,080 out of the scrap metal, so you're aware of that. I do have a question, Commissioner Harris should probably be able to help me on this. The beans that are, that were ex, that we've accepted out there, are those, what was the plan? Can you help me on that? I think I read somewhere, maybe give them back away or something, or?
Well, there's a point, we start mixing, we start burying them with dirt, mixing, and hopefully within a few years, we'll have some nice compost.
Okay.
Then we'll make a decision that time, we want to sell it, give it away, but that was the plan, long term.
Okay.
And we buried a couple times already.
We were trying to build a compost.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, some of those beans, I've had a couple people ask, are we interested in selling any of those at a price or not, or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know anything that makes money.
Yeah, I would think everything out there is for sale.
Okay. All right, you want me just to set a price, take care of it, and?
I'm, yes.
Good with that?
Do I need to make a motion then, or I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
You take care.
That was on the original, original thought process, the original discussions that.
Perfect.
We get it to the point where it was, uh, could be used for landscaping or composting or whatever they wanted to sell.
Okay.
Good.
That's what we'll do. Um, give you a heads up on, uh, dump truck 146, had air compressor go out of it. It has, uh, we feel it's under warranty, and it's back to Foley, they're looking at it to make sure that that is exactly what the problem is, but we're pretty sure that the air compressor went back out again.
Is that one of the old freight liners?
Uh, one of the old Macs, I believe. No, freight line, I'm not for sure, Jim. It probably is a freight liner, I'm not 100% positive on that.
Okay.
So, uh, kind of going down the line of, of trucks, I know we had that one that was put in the ditch because of lockup break.
Okay.
Right, and it took out both the, the trailer and the tractor.
Right.
Correct? They were getting determination on if it's totaled or not?
That's right, we've had, uh, two different companies come in and look at it, we haven't received their quotes back yet, whether they're considering it's totaled or what the exact cost is going to be. We should receive them this week.
Okay.
They were here latter part of last week, so.
Okay.
Um, they have been here, um, I know Mack was one of them, and I don't remember the company on the other one, but I know we've had two companies come in and look at it.
Have you made any decision on the old Sterling?
Which one is the old Sterling? Is that the one with the wiring issue?
Yes.
It's one that pulled the other belly down. Now, last estimate I saw on that was 18,000, that was just one estimate, so.
Okay, and do you know who that estimate was for?
Inland, inland.
Inland?
Yeah. I'd like to see, make a decision, either fix it or purble away, but.
Okay.
That's the one that we discussed last year, that the wiring harness.
Yeah.
Was shot, we parked it.
That old Sterling, yeah.
Yeah. Engine's still okay?
Yeah.
And it's a wiring issue, correct?
And that's the one?
Yes, yeah.
Is that the one we discussed, that was the cost more to fix it than we possibly paid for?
Well, we discussed that at a time, in my opinion, it was 18,000, the truck's not worth 18,000 rolling, so.
No, um.
That's something.
I will, we will, we'll get on that, see what we can get figured out on that truck, um, and go from there on that.
Okay.
Cemeteries, um, I think you had a request, maybe?
I do, uh, thank you.
Yep.
I've received a call from Alan Drake, which is on the board of Evergreen Cemetery, requesting rock in some areas, cause some areas of that cemetery is asphalt, but some is gravel. They need a little gravel donation, plus a little time with the motor grader, and we did this seven, eight years ago, so I'd like to recommend that we do it again.
Well, this is something that we normally try to take care of our cemeteries when they do need some minor things like that. I know in Mapleton, we went in and moved some dirt for them, cleaned up a, a couple of things, and a couple of other places, we've, uh, put in gravel for them, because that kind of, that kind of maintenance is not in their budgets.
Yeah, they don't have any money, so.
So, you know, it's a gift, and I think we're, it's, we should continue.
Okay, so, now with that, do I, when they contact, just go ahead and do it, or do you want me to bring them before you, or how do you want to do this?
It's probably better to bring it.
Okay.
To the commission, so.
Okay.
So the public knows what we're doing.
Okay.
On that.
Okay, I can do that. I know Lath Branch has reached out and asked for the same, and I think that's gonna be more grading work than it is hauling rock, and there might be a little bit of rock, but um, that'd be about the same.
Is that out east of town?
Yes.
Okay, that little bit going out there.
Jehovah Witness Church, and then back east and.
Yeah.
North, out there on 54 Highway. Um, and you said Evergreen, do I have a contact for that?
Alan Drake.
Alan Drake.
Your neighbor.
Okay.
One of my classmates.
All right. I know what I have. Blue book, just kind of give you a rundown on the, the bridges, where we're gonna try and go with this. Um, and I think there's five copies of these somewhere. Do we have any? I, I've come up with four. I could really use the fifth one.
Count this one?
Do you have one in your, I, I think it's down, they said, maybe in the bottom, it'll be blue with the. Okay. Nope, we can get you one if you want. If, Mr. Harris, you might be able to help me, right here where the says supplemental work, like the first tab, now, now back, the page back before, there's a email here.
Before or after?
Nope, right here. These right here, we're gonna go ahead and start and get the signs, signage taken care of real quick on those, and then there's another one back here, if you flip back to the tab that says immediate attention or what have you, there's one more there, we'll get that taken care of, and then we're gonna start working on the immediate attention bridges in this book, um, and go from there. Do you know if there is another book before the 2020, or does, I know I'm putting you on the spot here with that.
Well, the 19 was, I can tell you it's orange.
Orange, okay, okay.
But, uh, there ought to be one out in that building somewhere.
I haven't been able to, I found a 16. Would 16 be the last?
No, it's yearly.
Okay, all right, I'll reach out to Schwab Eaton on that, but just so everybody knows where we're going on our bridges, I've got a crew that, of two guys that, and we're gonna start, um, with the immediate attention tab. I know Commissioner, well, Harry, you gave me this here, I cannot, I cannot find these numbers that are on there.
Well, I don't know.
To relate with any of our other, have you seen this?
No.
See this, Route 66. Yeah.
That's just, uh.
What, what is 160? There's three bridges right there.
That's probably the rating.
Okay.
Sufficiency rating, uh, sufficiency rating, I'm guessing.
Okay.
That's what, that can't be there, 1013, that can't be that, that.
That's, maybe it is, okay.
114, can't be traffic count. I'll have to review these because those numbers don't make any sense neither.
Yeah, that's, we was having a very long time.
Right, yeah.
Slipping through that, um, but that kind of lets you know where we're going on our bridges. Um, on the one up at 85th and Xavier, we got our final cost in on material, and that turned out to be $3,700 or something, right in that range to fix that, so.
That's good.
Not bad.
It's, uh, it's up, and the road's back open, and we can now take it off the list. Anything for me? That I need to look at this week, or?
No, I want to look at a project with you, but we'll wait next week.
Wait next week, okay, all right, it's supposed to be a little cold Wednesday.
Thirty degrees warmer next week.
Right, right, right.
That's a lot better on us old guys.
All right. Do we want to go executive session now, or you want to wait till the end, or how do you want to do your executive session?
Well, I think.
It's on the list, so.
I think, uh, that, uh, the executive session, I think, I think they're both the same.
Could be.
They are. So we don't need to go in for one unless, unless you have another one?
No, no.
And when we.
I mean, unrelated, but it's in here already.
So do I call for it, do you call for it, who, how does it?
How long you need, Jim?
Uh, let's go 10 minutes, and could we include Susan Bancroft in our executive session?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
We need Justin?
No.
Okay, all right.
If, if you're combining mine, I'd like to have 15 total.
Okay, we'll do, well, it should be the same, I think.
It could be, I don't know.
So do we want to go 15?
Yes, please, yes.
Let's go 15.
That'd be fine. Where's the, where's, where's my cheat sheet at? So why would we go into executive session for 15 minutes? Uh, the KSA, 7543 19B dash.
One.
Per one. Okay, personal matters. Uh, to discuss personal matters of an individual not elected, personnel protect their privacy, and it is related to, uh, jobs, uh, description and job responsibilities per employee.
Per, you're gonna identify that?
Yes.
You're gonna talk about employees that are.
Yes.
Job, job performance, job description, and nothing?
Well, we will go over into executive session at 9:21 and be back at 9:36. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
It'll be three commissioners, Eric and Susan. Paul Faber?
Aye.
Aye.
We will meet back in this room at 9:36. Hey, Michael, how you doing?
We're gonna be probably over the spillway, so.
Open next week. Monday, maybe.
We, 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 our range broke, so we don't know how much we got over the last five hours.
I was really surprised yesterday morning when I went out. It was a little windy and drafty.
Nice, huh?
You could have the rain coming.
Yeah, I know that Sunday night, it was, it was raining hard at 10 and 11 at our house. And then I was about two o'clock with thunder, and he's like, oh, it's still raining hard, so, but our range said half an inch, so that he thought, oh, it's something wrong here. It broke, had a crack in it, so we had to replace it, but being from eastern Colorado, I, I love rain, we never had that.
Oh, yeah.
We, our bubble, our, our.
Our bubble, yeah.
You know, early feeling like, oh my God, who's got a rain? So we love.
It's been a pretty good year, too.
Yeah, I bet it's gonna go over the spillway, I know with our dock is almost level now.
Yeah.
Yeah, much better.
Probably about, some will be going to half a foot, three quarters of a foot.
Yeah.
But that's pretty great for, for.
Oh, yeah, we were, four and a half, five feet, when that valve issue happened in the summer.
Did they ever get it fixed?
Yes, they did, yeah. And they're working on getting, getting.
They've only been after that about 10 years.
Yeah, now they're gonna get an auxiliary valve, so just in case that one breaks, another valve to, to kind of back that up, which is important, I mean, that's supposed to be one of our water supports.
Oh, yes, deep, deep.
Yeah, yeah, so, it was good.
So they, they had an issue for a long time. Yes, I retired in 2000, and come back here, and every time you turn around and read the newspaper, problem.
Really? Oh, my gosh.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
Well, they were able to get it, uh, up to Kansas City to get the heart reengineered, and so saved a lot of money by doing that, and now we're working on having a backup to that. And, uh, so I knew, uh, they had a diver out there because issues were on the intake side of, uh, and that, that was about the same time that a young man had a kayak accident.
Yeah. There's a lot of people out on the land, so, wow.
Yeah, yeah, and the visibility in the water is about six inches.
Yeah.
So I think it was really, uh, it's not a good thing. Yes, yeah. That's not the only time that something like this happened in, in, years, years ago, uh, Louisiana Bay, they had a little water crossing, it's concrete, and the river was up, and the young couple, they kind of missed it, they were like, 19, 21, 22 years ago, and in the high end, because.
They drove through it, uh.
And drive through it, it, uh, fisherman found it down river about a month too late, from being, had to go fisherman.
That's something I had, we're living here from Colorado, we just didn't have that close kind of issue.
So is the weather supposed to get bad?
We had blizzard, yeah.
Is the weather supposed to get bad?
Colorado was very windy. There's college for some snow, uh. I did two years.
Tonight, yeah. It will melt tomorrow, it's gonna be cold tomorrow.
Supposed to be 15 degrees all week.
Really? So, Kansas, Kansas, so, so, tomorrow will get, you know, cold now, and all they had COVID, yeah.
Big beer cans, like, uh, the deal in Germany.
Yep.
The winds come through and blew the tits down.
Oh, yeah.
Blue, secret documents from here to Mexico.
Oh, you think?
Oh, I know so, I was there. I've seen an idiot captain jump out there, and they had a hole.
Oh, you mean the military?
Yeah.
I thought you were just talking about.
The hole for the, this bigger ring, and he's in his underwear, like, it's cold.
It depends on what radio our TV station.
Actually, it's coming off around this side. And he's, like, Thursday, 42, didn't, I said Friday, didn't, if I was you, I would get that clothes on, I'd get out of there. I'm thinking, I'm leaving, yes. Exercise got canceled.
Yeah.
Is the visibility in the water at the lake something that is, so you can brush it out?
You know, um, we did check with Michael, and, uh, Skitch is our liaison at the city, and he checked on that, and they just, they haven't been doing any kind of evaluation of the water at all. So he, uh, Michael's looking into that and saying, really, we need some kind of standard So he, Michael's looking into that and saying, really, we need some kind of standard, so that we know about equal I for one, and blue green algae for another, and so that's something that Michael is looking into, but I'm going to keep an eye on it, encourage Michael to do that, so we don't lose track.
Yeah, Kansas water isn't ever going to be like Colorado water.
Oh, no, or even, it's like Beaver Lake, you know, so.
We had some of the clearest water ever, it's some of the strip case over there.
Well, oh, rock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, we have so many inflows from the fields, it's amazing.
The water may not be as good if they get that pipeline across the aquifer out there, it boos and leaks. It's happened in Montana farmer who's out there, one of those little ride big tractors, and he was wondering what was wrong with his tractor, and he looked at the wheels on it, and had oil all over it, million gallons, I used it. The pipeline that comes across from Canada down this way? And that's happened up there, and it had a big massive spill up there, million gallons. And I worried about the aquifer, because if you get an aquifer out there, you're.
Okay, yeah. I don't know what all this, I can't really comment on it. I can't comment on that at all, I really haven't been updated or researched on it.
Anything could happen.
That's right, you've got to have safety measures in place, so.
Can you think of just two years ago, California had a huge, I'm going to call it Passamaulio Heights, just slightly east of LA, and they have a massive underground natural gas source.
Natural?
Natural gas, but it's underground, and it's basically in caves or seals.
Right.
They had a massive leak.
Oh, yeah, it's on Birmingham, just by Ontario Airport, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Creative.
You just never know what can happen, could happen, possibly happen, you know, even.
Even in Hutchinson, I mean, Hutchinson's salt lake, so.
Yeah.
And what's happened, Hutchinson, really.
My biggest problem with the pipeline that went across Kansas, our legislature, we're the only state that did this, our legislature in two thousand and six voted not to tax the pipelines that come across there, and they're made in company, and we've lost billions because of that. And they didn't cite in that, oh, we made a mistake, and we're going to go back and change it, and you know what the court says? That force is already out of the law, and so we lost it.
And that's why we need good people in the legislature that are looking out for that.
I seen that, I was like, oh. That's because people don't read documents, you know, they just write blank things, they rush things. Probably say before you sign a contract, you want to get a fine for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've gotten out of that habit.
At all levels, huh?
Well, especially because of the, anything you log on to now, or signed up for, you're going to have some ridiculous amount of.
Three.
Yes, legal mumbo jumbo generation, of course, if you don't say yes, you don't get to load that program.
Yeah. Yep.
But remember, you can always hit the delete button once you get on there. I load a bunch of stuff on here from the app store. I might have it on a day, half a day, two or three days a week.
Yeah, yeah, if you're not going to use it.
Yeah. If the smartphone is only as smart as the operator.
That's it.
You know, I mean, it's, it's.
So true.
Yes, no, I was going to talk about if you have a relatively new vehicle, they need an IT person to explain the damn dashboard.
Yes, all right.
It's so complicated and mysterious, so I thought, I'm going to tell you about it. And I thought, don't all vehicles now come with the map GPS?
Yes, yeah, no. You have to pay for that one, huh?
No, 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 you just look up your phone, so you just Bluetooth your phone, go to your map, right there, yeah, well, that's great, unless you're going through small towns and.
Yeah, it doesn't have any internet.
Cities that has no cellphone connectivity. And then you get to the other side of connectivity, it's like.
Oh.
I don't know.
That's why we still have our Jill Garmin with us.
Yes, yes.
I mean, really?
And I went out and bought a Garmin.
Yeah, we are still so limited on our internet access, I cannot participate fully with Red Cross to be doing disaster response, to be the professional person to contact the client, because we're doing it virtually, because my internet sucks. So it goes real slow on the systems, and then plus my cellphone, you know, I'm supposed to be talking to them on the phone, the phone calls drop, drop, you know, so I cannot be primary on these calls. So I'm secondary, we have to have two people at least on a call to verify identification and damage classification or hire, and, yeah, I can't be primary because.
When I keep starting from the bandwidth, the bandwidth call, you're trying to talk.
That's something we still need, we still, we need this, and the information that came out from the state, Urban County wasn't one of those counties that was getting some additional granting for the internet broadband, I thought, why aren't we?
That's amazing, because.
Why aren't we?
With the state Spark Fund, there'll be money there for connectivity, because of education, world needs, so.
Yes. Yeah. But it didn't happen, Wilson County had like, I don't know, was it two or three different grants that they got for broadband?
You get the word right there, is grant.
Yeah.
In our county, and I still believe it, and I'm talking to the person, but our county needs a person sitting here that does nothing but write grants, and people go, why do you say that? My buddy that runs the road box up in Lake County, when they had the big storms went through, he got five hundred thousand dollars for gravel, and turned around and got another five hundred dollars for six bridges, not, we're talking, and it's only the county over permitting.
Well, Will had a hard time getting things for people to approve and to do this.
He's probably a hundred, a clean hundred bridges, that's good, I'm not saying it's bad, but if we had a grant, why?
Yeah, that was. It's hard to, yeah, but that was quite a process for him, even getting it approved to go for this.
Is that, is that something? I'm still a little nervous, or unsure, I'm not knowing, I just don't know what all Gatto can do.
And you're on the board of the committee.
I'm one of the board members.
And yet we are on YouTube, and they can hear us, just, just so you're aware.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
So we're currently posting for the job position of the economic development director, and as I understand it, that is for business and economics. So this particular area may not flow under that, but I don't know why it can't be discussed and incorporated, because that kind of falls under disasters and emergencies, what he's talking about.
Yes.
So the person could say, well, wait a minute, if I don't have roads and infrastructure, I can't have business.
Yes, if I don't have it, I can't have business.
Well, that's what they talked, they talked about last week, a bridge up by Clifton that is probably, it needs replaced or closed.
Right, right.
And that was when they asked for public comments, that was a little phrase I forgot, was just what you said, if we don't have roads, it doesn't really matter at this point how many people are going on the roads, if we don't have safe roads and bridges, people aren't going along.
For corners.
People are moving there more all the time, for a lot of different reasons, and that's part of economic development, is having good roads and bridges.
And.
One of the things I learned in politics is the difference, you can say, I'm speaking on behalf of myself now, and so, and so, there has been discovery and time spent with Allen County, Dry Island.
Yes.
And the, my hopes is that we will use their process that they've already established and be able to streamline ours, and then have volunteered directors and managers of Dry Island County, and they will assist us. So once we get an economic development director, that should help speed up that process.
Yeah.
Now, they use it for housing, they use it for saving infrastructure, and so those things are very common, if we can get.
Okay, got you.
Okay, I move that we go, we come out of executive session at nine thirty-six AM, and go back and open session, no action.
Uh, Corretta.
There needs to be a motion and a second.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Okay, Corretta, would you put in the executive session on the agenda for next week for personnel? That's the only option on that.
Sorry, you're next.
Excuse me just for a second. Oh, go ahead.
You're next, you'll have to amend your agenda now, Jim doesn't need that executive session now, because you guys wouldn't have known that it was about the same thing to basically have that taken off the agenda.
Well, I remember we have been to amend the agenda to remove the executive session for Jim Harris's executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Be right back, gentlemen.
Got freshman basketball this week, or?
Uh, tonight, yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, Matt's going a little bit tonight, yeah.
So they're all up and playing now?
Yeah.
And then Friday night?
Yeah. Hayden got five nights this week. Went to El Dorado last night, a bit tonight, back to El Dorado, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Thank Fort Scotty, Friday here, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah, it is here Friday.
I don't expect much more than a, than a C today, maybe a D plus. I'm not, I'm not really, no, I'm just kidding.
Glad you didn't throw that away.
What's that?
Glad you didn't throw that away. That was nice.
We need to build the test tube.
Yeah.
Okay, last, last week, I can find it here, wherever I put it. I don't know what to do, just kidding, and here it is, right here. Last week, we approved the bonds refinancing, but it has to have a resolution attached to it. So I moved that we adopt resolution seven dash twenty-one to attach to the bond refinance package that we approved last week.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Okay, Jim.
During the campaign, I was approached by several folks requesting that we consider moving our time and possibly the dates of our meetings, not looking for any decision here today. Just want to open a discussion, if we can move forward, if we want to move the times, we want to move the dates. One suggestion was have one or two later in the evening or afternoon, make us more accessible to the public, so I just want to put that on the table for discussion, because it was mentioned several times during the campaign. And maybe there's times we can or should be more accessible to the public, people get off at five o'clock, invite them to the meetings, get them more involved, I'm just putting it on the table for discussion.
Well, we've had this discussion a few times, and we've agreed to.
Down, sorry.
You didn't say?
We've had this question a few times, and we've all conferred that we could have one meeting a month at night, you know, all it is is a scheduling issue, if we want to do it, we can do it, I have no problem with it. How about you, Clifton?
Yeah, I agree with Jim, I mean, I've had people ask, I agree with Jim, move it to.
I don't feel the problem.
Move them to a, um, a different night, my opinion would be Wednesday nights, maybe not night, but late afternoon or something like that.
Five o'clock?
Uh, what's that?
Five o'clock type thing, or?
Well, maybe make it a little earlier for the department heads, so they could, you know.
That's kind of what my.
Deal with that stuff for a while, and then the public can show up at five thirty if they want, or whatever, I don't know.
So we, we shut down about four thirty, so we could start it like at four?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, you know, we can.
Well, something we could consider, starting immediately at three o'clock, we can conduct our business, and by five o'clock, we're ready for the public, for an hour, or whatever it takes to compete today. I'm kind of like you, the evening meetings would be better for me on a Wednesday, because that's the only night, only night my grandsons don't have sports, so. So I'm just being honest with you.
There's a lot of people out there that is in the same situation.
That's right.
So.
Is, I may ask the audience, is once a month enough?
I think it's, I think it's a good start.
Okay.
Should we talk about this?
They should be doing this in public comment.
Hey, we do this in public comment, Ian, sorry.
We don't want to, we don't want to get.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's my fault, I'm out of line, so.
So anyway, we can, we can think about it and talk about it again next week.
Okay.
Sounds like a good deal to me.
Good.
Okay. Is Will around? Sorry?
Would you put that on the agenda for next week?
Sure.
Is, is Will around?
I don't know, you find out.
I'll take him a call.
I'll look after him on Wednesday.
What?
I'll look after him on Wednesday.
Well.
It's my answering phone.
I'll go get him.
So we're going to take a break for a minute, so.
Take a break.
Take a break.
Take a break.
You want to say something?
Public comment, sorry.
Okay, we will pull this guy, and we'll have something out of him.
We're our own committee over here.
So is Wednesday a sport night in town or something?
Uh, not typically, but it is, it can be a church night, but I don't know of COVID that any church, I don't know what churches are doing anything, I, I know.
Is that still something that happens, like, well, at Liberty High School, we could have any high school events on Wednesday night?
Yeah, Wednesday nights.
Yes, it, yes.
It still is.
It's thought it is, yes. I think the Mastering Church goes.
Yeah, I got a ball game tonight. I got a ball game tonight.
I gotta go to the bet.
Come on Friday.
And then track season, track goes to Tuesday night, it's weird, Thursday nights.
Well, I got a granddaughter that's weightlifting, so that's going to stop.
Now, do they do that on the weekends, though?
What's that?
Do they do weightlifting on the weekends?
I don't know, I haven't seen it scheduled, it said it starts in February. I'll take it, wait, let it treat it a week.
That's good, kids need to be.
Oh, exactly.
Do you care if we do anything at night?
You're on the evening, that's right. Works at the cell phone, it's a router?
A special topic for that particular community.
It was only fifty dollars on the device, it was five hundred feet.
And like with this resolution, oh, oh, seven hundred.
Jim?
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, no problem.
Make sure you speak up, Will, so I can hear you back here.
Turn to my corner. Okay.
Okay, Will.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning to you all. Hope you're having a wonderful, cool day.
Yes.
It's gonna get a little touchy this evening and into tomorrow. Okay, let me bring that down. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, yeah, the weather's gonna change a little bit. Hopefully not real bad like this ice storm we just had. Today I'd like to talk about the new COVID strain. And my ideas about how we should move forward with this. Of course, it's open for discussion naturally. Some of the points that, that, that I've had with public health and a few other folks is, uh, number one, and you probably heard this, is definitely more contagious. It's just as deadly, if not more. They haven't determined that exactly, but the word is, and it may go this direction, is the fact that we may have to double mask. Now, what you guys have on now is like a paper filter surgical mask. I have a cloth mask, multiple layers. But we may end up, it may end up being that. Now, rest assured, I have plenty of masks, okay, all different kinds. The one that Lynn's got on is a KN ninety-five. It's a non-medical, but it still is a filtering mask, okay? And that's some of the things that we're gonna look at. I still have quite a bit of money. Bill Martin is, he and I are the ones that saw it after this. It's about a little less than a hundred thousand dollars that we can still spend, okay? It's, it's not spark money. The way it is, is you buy it, then you give the receipt to the state and then they reimburse it. Okay, so it's still no money out of our pocket. To prepare for this, okay, and I mean way in advance so that we're not caught on the short end of the stick here. Is, number one, I recommend, and I'm, I highly recommend, a department head meeting, okay? And in that meeting, we're gonna talk about the double mask possibilities. We're going to, I'm, I want each department, even though they may not be there experience of doing this, is to create a plan that they have for their department. Individually of the courthouse, okay? And a couple of things that they need to touch on is employee vacations and where they're going, okay? We avoided one situation with that last year. I won't name the department, but we kind of cut it off at the knees, if you may. And that person came back and they had to quarantine, okay, travel, okay? Uh, but in those department head meetings, definitely the plan needs to be put in place and then they need to test it. Now, some of them have already done that. Some of them have already had a plan for their department already. And they did a really good job. A lot of them were asking me for gloves, which I have plenty of, those nitro gloves. Got all kinds of masks for them, whatever they're comfortable wearing, okay? But moving forward from that plan is something that, that they need. And I think that we do them every other month, or we can do them once a month as department head meetings. They can always call me, email me if they have a question. Naturally, if it's something above my experience and knowledge, I definitely will bounce it off of public health. But I think that if we put something like this in place per department, that it'd be easier to handle if this thing does turn the other direction on us, okay? Something that for, for you all as commission body would be looking at down the road, and which we have done, is a closure of the courthouse or a partial closure of the courthouse. And definitely, this is something that I, me and Shane have talked about and they've exercised against this. There has been some problems with it and that is work from home situation. Can you, in your department, work from home? This is some of the other topics that we're gonna talk about. Do you have the equipment? And then if they don't, say, well, like for instance, where I live, there is no internet, okay, nothing, okay? So, the laptop that I have, the iPod that I have, of course, my cellphone, is all done through satellite, okay? So I don't have to worry about internet or anything and I've tested, it works fine, and so on and so forth. But once again, this is something that I've been looking at, studying, working with public health in regards to this. This coming Thursday, this week, we're going to have an exercise. Now, the state, at first, this is KDHE talking, at first they didn't want us to do it, okay? But then they said, okay, you do it wisely, six foot apart, limited people in the room. Go ahead, do your exercise. And our exercise is revolving around the vaccine and how to, and where to administer it and so on and so forth. Now, of course, I play a small role in that. I don't administer any vaccines, but the logistics side of it would be definitely someplace that I would have a, a play in, in the program. But they're picking buildings and, you know, different things. They gotta look at parking and all that and what the availability is in the county. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'm free to answer whatever you might have.
Well, I'm gonna refer to our, our resident health advisory on this. Because, you know, I, I'm keeping up with, with what's going on also and.
Yeah.
And I've heard a talk with the double mask. I've heard talk of, you know, different scenarios. And I've seen the lockdown in, in Europe or in England.
Yeah.
Because of, of this. And then you get the other side, we're not getting the recommendations out of CDC or the administration right now. New York and California are starting to loosen restrictions on some of their, uh, outdoor dining and indoor dining things. So, you know, it's kind of one of those tossing the coin to me. What's your thoughts?
Yeah. So, just my opinion. I mean, it, it is, there is a, a variant that's more contagious. You could say it's more deadly. The fact of matter is it's more contagious, so it's hitting more people, which then causes that death rate number to go up. It doesn't mean that the virus is more deadly or the mortality increases, just hitting more people. Double masking, I, I mean, if you're wearing the correct mask, there should be no reason to double mask that.
Right.
Just, just wear the correct mask.
Yeah.
That's, again, my opinion. A, a, as far as vacation and things like that, I mean, the state has guidelines, the CDC has guidelines, our federal government has guidelines. If you go out of country, you come back in, you have to quarantine for fourteen days. I mean, those, those are already in effect. Now, in my opinion, it should be, I mean, somebody, nobody's tracking that very well. And there's not enough people to track that, so. But I know one of our employees went on vacation. She out of country, came back in, she had to quarantine for fourteen days. That was in Missouri, I mean, a Missouri resident. I mean, those are in place already. The department heads should be following that. I mean, that, those are, those are in place. I mean, I think it goes back to plain and simple. You follow what the CDC says. They're the experts. My opinion, uh, you know, with the new administration, I could see a lot of changes.
Right, yeah.
But again, I personally will go back to the CDC. They're the experts. We are not.
Great. So how many masks you have on hand right now?
That, that was gonna be a question of mine too, is, is, you know, it's okay to have a hundred thousand masks if we're not gonna distribute them.
We, we have probably right now, in the neighborhood of about a hundred and sixty thousand. That's combined total of surgical KN ninety-fives. We have some cloth masks and we have the N ninety-five. We probably have at least a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand easily, okay, at my disposal.
Can I tell you how many masks we're giving out on a daily basis?
Well, when this first started, to all first responders, I was pushing gloves, masks of any kind, and I gave them various ones that they could fit, fit test, you know, whatever they're comfortable wearing, okay? And it slowed down, the only people that are really asking me for stuff now is the EMS. The jail, I mean, it, you name it, all the deputies. That's, that's the reason why I'd like to go back to a department head meeting and push this out and, you know, short of reminding them. I mean, when Jim was out there at Roan Bridge, he and I had several discussions about different masks, gloves, guys riding together, things like that, just using as, as an example. So, I mean, but sometimes it, it's kind of a refresher course. That's kind of what I want to do with them. And, and get down, because, because I really think that you take the guys that go out and measure the houses, okay, they're outside, okay? But are they really wa, do they have hand sanitizers, which I've got a lot of, and wipes, the bottles and the wipes? Do they, are they, do they know I have them, okay? That's what really needs to know, okay? It's real simple to get, you know, I track it. I don't charge nobody naturally. But I track this no matter what department I send it to, okay? So I'm all, I'm on top of what we're handing out. I just want to do a refresher, okay? And make sure that they are aware, number one, where this stuff is at, how easily they can get it. We, we have those, it was a pallet, little over a pallet and a half, I can't remember how many bottles, that public health didn't hand out, that I still have back there in the jail, okay? We handed some out at the door and I believe we're out now. I'm not positive. But I was having them handed out and I'm gonna talk to public health and just kind of find out how many of this that they're gonna have left over so we can start that again. But, you know, once again, it's just all about being safe and understanding which direction we need to take this.
Well, I don't see any problem with you getting with the department heads and, you know, having a refresher, letting them know where that we're into a, a different variant and that you do have the availability of the PPE and.
Yeah.
You know, that, that'd be a good move, just to let them know that.
Yeah.
You have plenty of stuff and please come get it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think another, um, when it comes to the vaccine, you mentioned the vaccine, Will.
Yeah.
The logistics of distributing that is a nightmare.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that vaccine has to be used in a certain amount of time. Once it's, once that vial is accessed, it has to be used in so many minutes. Um, there's a lot that goes into that. And I don't want to say the whole thing's been botched across the country. It's just a, it's a logistical nightmare.
Right.
It really is.
Were you invited?
So I think I would, I mean, but we have, you know, CHC has access to the vaccine. I think Becky probably has access to the vaccine, some of those. My opinion is I, if I were you, I would be not only talking with, um, with our local health department, but possibly CHC, who's our largest provider in this area. Do they need any assistance with that?
Right.
Do we have a building that works, um, you know, or, or any other doctor in town or pharmacy?
Yeah.
Because it is a, the timing of that vaccine having to be used is a problem for healthcare.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's why people have to sign up. You, you know, they have to know you're coming. And, uh, you know, any assistance we could offer those people that have that vaccine available, I think we should.
Sure.
And, and those people that have that are, you know, our local health department, CHC, and I believe Walgreens, but I'm not positive on that one.
They, they, I got a call last night, say you could call and, and see where you fell on the, on the list.
My guess is they probably don't, may not want help as, as a big corporation, but my guess is CHC would be happy to work with us.
So I, so, so far I've had the contact from, uh, CHC, Walgreens, KUMed, Ullethe Health. Every one of those organizations has reached out to me and, and invited me to, to call and see where I fell within their, their parameters.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, I mean, I would start local first.
Yeah.
That's what, I mean, that, that would be my direction for this.
Would you, would you want to attend that exercise that we're gonna have? It's gonna be at the public health building. Starts at ten o'clock this Thursday. I don't know if they invited you or not, but I'd like to see if you wanted to be there. It's up to you.
I'd have to look at my schedule.
Okay, all right. Just keep it in mind. Contact Becky. Tell her, you know, I stuck my foot in the door and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, um, but, you know.
And, 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 and that's great that you're, they're doing that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, you know, we do have other doctors in town.
Right.
That may need our assistance.
Right, right, okay.
Will, something that, uh, I think it's a great ideal, meeting the department heads, because I think we've got some departments that's getting a little lax.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree.
But also, moving forward, and we might be doing all we can do, but as we get closer to the vaccine, do we have a plan? Does the health department have a plan to educate the public? A news brief, we have vaccines. I mean, it's good to get these vaccines, but nobody knows it.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a call from the CHC. I don't know how it's gonna work, but it seemed like no one I've talked to really knows what's going on.
It's been my experience with the last round of vaccines that they, they got. It's such a limited amount of vaccines they, they had. They just have a, a call list.
Call list.
That, that they go down this call list and call the people and, and when they run out, they run out.
Run out, yeah.
I mean, the, the phases haven't necessarily been followed by the state, so.
Okay.
The, uh, that's the whole purpose behind this exercise. It's more of an informal type exercise, okay? And we're gonna discuss things like that. In, in other words, how to get the, the news out to the public. What area, what direction are they gonna take this? How often, just like Clifton was saying, how often and where and, and so on and so forth. They've called me and asked me about a couple buildings and I gave them some contact information that I had. Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns. I've received a couple emails about people that were over sixty-five. They knew my email address. They emailed me and I said, you gotta call public health, you know, and, and get your answers there. And of course, you know, if you don't get, you know, resolution from them, then just call me back, you know, let me know. So far, it's all been good. Yes, people are getting on the edge of their seat. I understand that. But within our facility, I think that, and I'm glad you all, I, I knew you would, is the department head meetings, refresher course, just to kind of know, hey, be on the lookout, this is where we're at, you know? And then just go from there, so.
Okay.
It's all good, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Will.
You're welcome.
So, I've received this email, and this is something that comes up, this is my first exposure to it, and it comes from the Anna K E H R S at S E K Works dot org. This is, I'll just read the first part of it. "It's time for us to review and renew the chief elected official agreement for the 17 counties represented by Southeast Kansas Work and Local Area V Workforce Development Board. Per the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act of 2014, Section 107(c)(1)(b)(i), where there exist multiple units of local government within a local area, the chief elected officials of those governments are to enter an agreement with which defines their general rights and roles. And I can tell you that there is a meeting coming up Thursday, that I was invited to. This is, they call it the CEO Agreement Public Meeting, it starts, there's one on Thursday, one on Friday, I'm gonna hit the one on Thursday, if so agreed by the commissioner, so I can have more knowledge about where this goes. And it's requesting us to sign this agreement to still be part of this 17 county workforce development program. So, you want me to put it on the agenda for next week after my meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we make a motion?
Call report back.
Do we make a motion for you to attend?
Yes.
I'd make a motion for Chairman O'Hara to attend the chief, well, it's, there we go. It's for the agreement, Chief Elected Official Agreement for the 17 counties represented by Southeast Kansas Works Incorporated, Local Area V Workforce Development Board.
O'Hara, second.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, right. It's extremely virtual. Michael, I don't know if you've watched the commissioner's budget very closely, but there's very, 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 very little increase in the commissioner's budget, and I guarantee that the questions don't go hardly anywhere.
You could get the Honolulu pretty cheap right now.
It has to be cheap, doesn't it?
I don't know how the education was at that. The monthly meetings that we attend, they're either in Cheneau, or Gerard, or Iowa, or somewhere like that, we don't charge mileage. You know, we just, we just don't, it's a service.
Too early for violence.
But in the past, they have. I'm really pleased that the commissioners don't. Okay, what do I have here? Have we done this one already?
I thought so.
The League of, we already approved this one.
Then we approve KAC, why are we a member of a league municipality? That's really a city function.
Well, it's just, it's just that we have been forever, and we get input from them, and it's kind of supporting our cities, if you will, so we can have a coordinating factor.
How much does it cost?
Huh?
How much does it cost?
$1,100 annually. If you don't, if we don't want to be in it, we don't have it. So, it says right here, "It's always a pleasure to be able to serve the citizens of the county of Kansas. Work with you to ensure the very best possible for all citizens we serve. We take few moments to read through the included information, and should you ever have a question, please contact us. Mission of League of Municipalities values the strength and advocate for the interest of the cities of Kansas with a long-standing association provides for our members and cities and counties with unified voice in matters of local government." So, the League is, when I was in Depeka, they were mostly a voice for the cities and counties. Justin, are you familiar with them?
I've used their legal resources in the past. There's a lot of information that they have that is relevant.
So, it's been good for us, yeah.
For the legal standpoint.
Okay, I'm okay.
From a legal standpoint, they do, so.
It's about three hours, a bill of hour, four maybe.
And you've used them?
I've used the League of Counties and League of Municipalities, I've called them.
Susan, I imagine Susan probably involved with them, too, because they give them budget tips for cities and counties. It's just local governments for official operating budgets, which could be helpful.
And we're gonna talk about this during my time, that there's gonna be some legislative action that we're gonna need to have possibly taken in our counties, and we're gonna need some help, some lobbying laws.
So, you know, they kind of turn into, when you get the news, you know, we're reading this, it's kind of, it is, it's when they get into the session, it's a lobbying effort.
We also use KAC, and we have KCAM.
Yeah, KCAM, yeah, KCAM, when I call them, it's usually an employment matter or workers' comp issue. Or, actually, we've had some insurance matters we've had to call them on, too, just to think about. So, KCAM is usually I deal with the employment matters, insurance matters. KAC, you know, obviously, I've talked a lot, I'm sorry, I should, thank you so much.
The three different entities have actually three different functions. KAC, I talk to the legal counsel sometimes sporadically, but when I do, it's usually about a resolution or, you know, dealing with specific information with regards to an employment matter. KCAM is almost always insurance, workers' comp. And then the League of Municipalities, I'll call them usually with regards to global issues, you know. The wind farm came, comes to mind instantly, I talk to them. So, I mean, they all have different expertise, and then I think we're gonna be using the League quite a bit, with your guys' permission, and during my time, I've got to talk about a meeting I had last week in the evening to go through the processes with you all, and.
So, you recommend it.
For $1,100, it's, if you call, if you call them, I mean, you know, three times, you're not making your money back, unfortunately, but you're.
At $250 an hour.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's good to have them, so you can have that contact, just in case. It's one of those, you know, they have expertise in certain areas that, you know, none of us really can get to speed on. And the legislative part, the updates are really important, because sometimes they do have a direct impact on, I mean, you know, the cap, I mean, there's just different things I could think about that they've been highly involved in, trying to get that changed, you know, the taxing stuff, property taxes, which we'll be talking about here shortly. I mean, they're highly involved in that, that process, and they're kind of our arms and ears, and, I mean, they're the ones that deal with legislators. I mean, there are, you know, there's, we have an entity within our own county that basically have their own lobbyists, you know, they'd go up and deal with the governmental part, and we don't have the time, energy, or money for that right now. That would probably be a $50,000 to $60,000 employee if you were gonna have someone do the legislative aspect. Yeah, the legislative aspect.
Does it change anything, where Susan's already a member?
Well, you know, it's, that's a good point, I mean, she would be able to, you know, shared services, that's one of those things that I think we could really work hard on this year. I mean, it's January, so we have 11 months to look at how that would look with the, you know, having the different entities share that. I mean, I know every penny is important, and we've talked about that a lot, you know, years and years, we've talked about how every penny is important, and so $1,100 is not chump change, it's a lot of money.
Well, it is a lot of money, but you know, I really kind of feel that going forward with Susan being on board, that we're gonna be able to utilize these services more, because none of us have the time to do that.
Right, and legislatively, you guys will get my point when it's my time to talk about an issue that has been kind of percolating for the last couple of years, and I think we finally are at the point where we have some time and maybe the ability to move forward on it. So, and they'll, they'll become a big part of that once we, if you guys decide to pull the trigger on it.
So, it's money well spent.
It is. Okay, where are we at? Back to the list.
Do we need to make a motion?
We did last year, last week, we already did last week. So, I had a discussion with our county attorney. As you know, hopefully you know, that her assistant county attorney has now resigned and took another position. And she has been out looking for someone to fill that position. Also, the attorney that handles the child and needed care cases has also resigned. And both those, both those issues, or both those positions require a lot of time and dedication.
And I don't mean to interject, I don't know if the CINC attorney has officially resigned.
Oh, you don't know, okay, retract that one then, I just heard.
Yeah, he might be employed still with the county.
Okay, well, I'll retract, well, anyway, we'll go with strictly nothing but the assistant county attorney. So, it's a very, very tough field to get a replacement in. She's reached out to multiple areas to try to find someone. She has found someone, but they're not able to start until March the 1st. So, she's asked for permission to hire someone on a 1099 basis between now and March 1st.
Did she miss any kind of money for two months?
Yeah, she missed money, it's $100 an hour.
$100 an hour?
Yes, sir. And I was told that she would probably have limited use on that position. And for the position that's coming up in March, it's gonna be 80,000, which is $15,000 more than what the position was paying. But there's just no availability of attorneys for that position. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the use of a 1099 employee for the assistant county attorney before, beginning now until the 1st of March.
I'd make a motion to approve the assistant county attorney, as said by Chairman O'Hara, of the approval of the 1099 employee till March 1st.
O'Hara, second.
I second that.
When the reins are poured, right, any discussion?
I do have a question. Now, moving forward next year or whatever, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, our county attorney is part-time?
Yes.
How does that affect these assistant positions, her being part-time here and working for other counties?
I think number one, you want to make clarify, it's an elected position.
Yeah, this is an elected, this is an elected position, so it's a supply and demand issue, more than anything. You know, I can speak firsthand about this, it's not easy to fill these positions statewide, especially in rural Kansas, it's difficult because of the pay is usually an issue. ACAs in larger municipalities are easily averaging 80,000 a year for a full-time position. To get a full-time county attorney, probably in this county, you're probably looking at about 110,000 easily, I mean, that's probably easily that, to get a full-time county attorney. So, you're looking at a position of a full-time county attorney, but the numbers themselves don't, you couldn't do this job by yourself. You would absolutely have to have at least a part-time ACA, I mean, you'd have to, so. Either way, you're gonna have a full-time and a part-time, but in this case, because of the caseload, and you could go through and do the analysis between the six judicial districts, which is Miami County, Link County, and Bourbon, the numbers here would easily show a full-time, two really full-time people, but we, you guys, unfortunately, I don't think the county can afford two full-time staff members.
And just running the budget numbers from last year, and I did that, they had the money under budget to handle this 1099 and a increase of 15 grand on a full-time.
At some point, the commission, I think this commission is gonna have to probably have a conversation with this matter of looking at the actual county attorney's position and possibly increasing that down the road.
Yes, I agree. The other part of that conversation also is that, once the Supreme Court turns the courts loose again for hearing cases in person, the docket is full, and it'll be full for quite a while. Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
It's still kind of on topic with the county attorney's office, and I'm not speaking on her behalf at all, she's an elected official, but one of the other things that has been mentioned is that, you know, because of COVID, they haven't had to have, they've had no ability to have jury trials. So, just an FYI, there could be some additional funding that's gonna be requested for the amount of jury trials that they're gonna be having when the courts open back up, which could be potentially late spring, summer.
Yes, sir.
So, they didn't spend any money on jury trials at all last year.
No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, I move that we recess into executive session with the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings at Executive Session KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Subject to be discussed during executive session is job function, I guess.
For a particular.
Are you gonna be naming a specific employee, or are you gonna be talking about something universal?
Specific employee.
Specific employee at this point, I guess.
Okay, so, I want to clarify, just to make sure, so when you're talking about a specific employee, it's gonna be an issue of job performance, or how they're?
Okay, it's job performance.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, it'd be job performance.
I second that.
Open session will resume today at, let's say, 10:36. Those persons to attend include the three commissioners, and is Susan still here?
I can go get her, Susan's taking 30 seconds, or a minute, if you want to delay.
So, we'll be, can I, I would amend that to 10:37.
I second that motion.
Yeah, I'll add that, sorry, and we will reconvene back in this room at 10:37.
Man, I should have a watchdog.
Just keep me on track.
I have to have a book here.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Keep us on track.
Keep us on, keep us on point.
Okay. Yes? You got that all memorized, huh?
Me?
Yeah.
She's never had this memorized for years.
Years.
Okay, I don't understand.
What?
I hope I don't. I don't know, it's on here, but. We have an elected county attorney.
Yes.
That works part-time because she doesn't have enough work here to do, but yet we have to hire an assistant county attorney, full-time, to take care of what she cannot take care of. I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with this.
A big raise, too.
Assistant county attorney is part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
Okay, um, wow.
One issue is because we don't have.
Only thing I would say to you right now is be patient. I wouldn't give, if you brought up an issue right now, because the issue's pretty volatile.
I understand.
So, I would let that play through before.
Okay, okay.
Tell you, get your battles.
Nope, I need to know that.
I'm gonna try the button.
Well, they had a good deal about county attorney, link county, it turned out, and it's very hard to find anybody to even run for county, and it doesn't matter which party, I mean, it's very hard to find somebody to even want to run for county.
Well, I think it's strange if you have a county attorney who doesn't live at the county.
Well, that's state law, you can do that.
You can also be a judge and not. You can also be a judge and not be a lawyer.
Yes, in Kansas.
Yes, in Kansas, you can be.
Magistrate judge, not district court judge.
No, municipal.
And I've thought about.
You can be a magistrate judge at the county level and not be a non-earned loan license.
I've thought of that often, I mean, to think about putting someone in office, I don't know.
Well, Sam Mason was in office for a long time. That's a long license.
Yeah.
Long time.
Long time.
He was a judge for, it was over thirty years, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
And then Judge Stephens was a legal attorney. Here, we're going, see, there's supposed to be a button over here.
It says executive session.
But I don't see it. We don't want to hit that, we don't want to hit that. I thought it was between YouTube. Was that what Shane said? Shane said there was a button that had the executive session, I said executive session off, but I don't see it. I'm just scrolling over now.
They also, actually, Arizona, they give a lot of latitude to parole leaguers who take the tests to go to the next level. You can adopt them completion.
Yeah.
And all that.
Yeah.
You can appear, of course, on cases, for, you can make appearance, of course.
A presentant of findings or whatever.
Prosecution ordinance.
Okay.
But you have to, of course, work under the...
Yes.
Under someone who's part of the term.
You couldn't just open an office downtown, say.
Well, you can, for some states, particularly if you have passed adoptive completion. All you can do is complete the standard forms that the county presents for like divorce, eviction, some liens, things like that.
And documents.
And documents. You know, Arizona is one of the states that does not require an attorney to close up a house.
I can tell you that locally, I know some people, they gave me the name of somebody that I would be in touch with, one thousand twenty-five hard, because it was right on the money. Is what effect it has.
I don't know that the state of Kansas has a document completion course or a certificate likely out there.
Not that I know of. I know the Kansas State Court has all the documents online now.
But I mean, as far as being a parole legal who has the document completion stand of approval.
I've never seen it. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I don't see, I've never seen it here. As time goes on, AI is going to have a profound impact on the legal community. We won't need research attorneys anymore, we won't need, by the time, the only real attorneys that are going to exist will be court.
Biggest, biggest assumption there is the high part. I'm not saying that.
Not that it's artificial. Are you interested in writing grants, or are you not?
Oh, no. Well, yeah, there probably is time. No, I know people that write grants. And I don't, so I don't see need, but, you know, there, I guess, some, that probably, you know, what if we wanted to, I don't know, do something, whatever we wanted to do. Would there be, well, how about, I don't know. Or, and search, or doing a school.
That's why you got those grant workshops.
I just call it that.
She'll not get.
I don't know, I don't know, I mean, I guess I would like, you know, I wouldn't want to do some of that search myself, you know, just to see, okay, does that really fit what I want to do, or what I need to adjust to make it fit, you know, those kinds of things. And what I would involve, you know, as far as ranking, right here, I'm like, I was like, I did that, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, Case State has an actual, part on their website, that direction to handle, right there. Especially, it actually help you to do a little research. It's available, you know, and it's pretty attractive.
So, there are all resources.
They have one there, the Yates Center. And they wanted to charge you eighty bucks a year.
Oh, no, no, yes.
This is actually, yeah, third case thing, but it's, oh.
My thing was, and I'm very admirable, because I pay my tax dollars to these people, it's just like they have got dollars to spend.
Sure.
And when you go to the driver's license, or you go in and out, and that office charges you five dollars for doing this, or doing that, doing the other. I mean, but that, excuse me, why am I paying a fee? A fee that's not.
That's where you know your resources, you can get it, so.
This was, this was on the radio, they said it, they said it for different counties.
Yes.
And it was a gap, right? There's other things that pay state that puts out there for workshops.
Yeah, like for the board.
They only charge you.
Board training, twenty minutes.
I wonder one now, I don't know, a caregiver, caregiver support, how to take care of yourself. I don't know, caregiver, I know who my sister is, so I'm like, well, just so you know, understand what she's, what she's. Well, she's there, that's what's happening, I mean, I kind of did it already, but, you know, it's five bucks, five bucks. And then there's one going on, that later, then here.
Yep.
And all roads can be climbed, I better start learning.
And that one's free.
The process a little bit, yes, and that one's free. And so, we're not going to be, it's going, but I'll, I'll soon.
Yeah, maybe I'll.
I don't want to watch, and, yeah, just so that I begin to comprehend some things, because it changes all the time. And I don't want to go in and, as the time you can, you know, it's the things, and.
Well, I will forward that information to you.
Well, yeah.
Sure, thanks Nancy.
In Kansas, when you get sixty-five, you're likely expected to see good, once you get sixty-five. And you're, you know, how, you live longer after sixty-five. And the reason that is, because obviously, you don't have access to many of the things.
Uh, yes, yes.
You know, because, you know, it's paid.
Take up seed that's been filed for the, for the, for the. Well, we're part of the Pfizer.
Recommend the giving states as well. He was one of the, like, the real good, real on that.
Yeah, yeah.
All the, all the, so. They asked me about the county, so I was like, you know, and it was pretty. They asked me about, like, publicity, they said, is, well, is it going to follow some, but they don't have, you know, it's sort of party. And the thing is, in the county, is they need to probably, so, and suddenly, it becomes a party, so. And he does the old engineer's calendar, and he didn't catch, so, it turned out, well, you could expect that we have a medical, you have a lot of, um, amount of people you see eventually.
Okay, I look for phone calls better, which is probably a good thing, but at the same time.
Yeah, I know.
It's kind of, I need to check on something a little while, like, the table, oh. Well, somebody usually, they don't get right on the tape or something, somebody. Oh, can't hear it, what's wrong?
Okay. I move that the county commission come out of executive session at ten thirty-seven. Here, second.
I got any discussion?
No action.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ken's on his way over.
Court break.
Smoke, if you got it.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, architect type, interior, something, something in, something there, I don't know exactly. Product design, interior, architect, I mean, there's, it's, it used to be, you know, when I was in college, architecture was just architecture. Now, it's, there's like fifty different subsets.
Means she's not a local.
No. Probably not. No. But it's, yeah, it's way different. The, you know, the subsets of, like, you know, when I was in college, an engineer was an engineer, now there's fifty different.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's why I showed you, so, I just forget some cases.
Of course, there's some points, I need to get your, you know, that other thing we were discussing.
Yep.
And I have some chat.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I haven't texted you back.
Yes, she did, it was so funny.
We talked about our.
I can give her quite a bit of money.
Road bridge group. This is just kind of how.
She, Michael, but it's, I don't know how well you know her, she's extremely shy, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, that's okay, I saw Whitney in Walmart the other day, so we talked about it a little bit.
Thank you.
Little light pen.
Yeah.
Well, I thought you'd already had it on.
We need to, and what's the actual wording, Justin?
I would move that we recess to executive session under the following exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Executive session, KSA seventy-five dash five four one nine B one, to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Subject to be discussed during this executive session.
Job.
New hires, applications that were sent in.
Application of new hires. Those persons to attend include the three commissioners, Shane Walker.
Susan and Justin.
Susan and Justin, makes county council.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. We will resume back in this room at eleven oh two.
Here, second.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Going to go hit the executive button?
You know, it's gonna be...
Okay.
We get the county commission from out of executive session at eleven oh one. He said eleven two.
We've got literally fifteen seconds, so we're.
Out of executive session at eleven two. And we will add to the agenda discussion about apprenticeship next week.
Yeah, that'd be the, that'd be the action.
From our executive session.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? So, Greta. And item one, the agenda will be discussion about on the French strip program. Okay, county councilor.
Need a vote.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Got a couple of things this morning to discuss. I'll go with the meeting that I attended last week with the Hen Valley Board. I was invited to come and talk about the tax sale for those properties. We've discussed these matters before with regards to the tax sale. You know, it's one of those things where the cost benefit analysis is obviously not in the commission's favor. There's, right now, I think there's seventy-four parcels that are in Hen Valley for this, this tax sale. They raise minimal three to ten dollars a year in, in taxes from, from the assessment. Patty and I have discussed it. I, we actually, I was there about an hour. We had a lot of banter with regards to maybe how to solve that problem. You know, one of the things that they were really apprehensive about is buying these seventy-four or seventy-five parcels and having to pay the property taxes on them. You know, just because they don't have, you know, they're not flush with cash. So, you know, another thing they talked about briefly was possibly a land bank. You know, I informed them, we're going to move forward, but we got to fix, we got to fix this problem. And that's where the legislators come in. You know, obviously, I think we need to look at possibly a, a bill allowing for a collection of some minimum, you know, whatever that amount is, ten dollars or twenty dollars a year instead of three dollars a year. I mean, the postage is hardly paid for on the collection for the envelope that Patty sends out. And then they have the second part that is of interest to me is actually having a minimum amount to actually have a tax sale. So, you know, I don't know what that number is. I don't, you know, have a, I have a number in mind, but I don't know what that is specifically. But it needs to be a amount that actually makes sense. You know, instead of a hundred and seventy-four dollars to collect taxes on, which you're going to sell that parcel for a dollar to five dollars, having it be five hundred or six hundred, some minimum amount to actually put in front of the, the commissioners to actually have the tax sale. So, they're gonna, they're going to have some more discussions. You know, we could obviously, you know, any good auctioneer will come in if you have a lot of, you know, widgets or antiques or something that you have a lot of. You're going to say, pull out a specific one, have that sold, and we can sell the, the group together, which will save time too. But if they're not willing to buy the parcels that don't sell in that sale, when you pull those parcels out, then it, it creates some problems again, because we'll be back in front of those same parcels or those same properties three years from now. And Commissioner O'Hare and myself have gone up there on a couple of occasions and actually talked. They, they have a new director. He's very nice, and the board was very understanding. But it's just a matter of money, really. It comes down to tax dollars. And, and so the time, energy, and the amount that's collected is just, it takes forty years to pay off, to break even on, on a tax sale once you foreclose on those parcels. And we can't discriminate, but it just seems.
So, let me ask a question. I, this is something that probably needs to be asked through the board up there is. So, say that I buy five lots and they're all connected. Can I take those five lots and combine them into one, which I know the answer, and then only pay fees for, for the combined lot?
Yeah, the, the association, I've read their, I mean, obviously, I'm not their attorney.
Right.
I'm giving absolutely no legal advice when it comes to their association's bylaws. But my interpretation of the bylaws would not allow for them to consolidate lots.
That's what, that's what my thought was too.
Yeah, and they're.
So, maybe if they would, they would go and, and change that in their bylaws to allow that.
I don't think they, it's really hard to change their bylaws.
Is it?
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't think when they, you know, these things were formed back in the seventies. So, I don't think they thought the process, you know, they didn't think about two thousand and twenty, back in nineteen seventy-four or five when it started. So, you know, obviously, there are a lot of parcels that are vacant at the Hen Valley property that we're selling in the tax sale. And, you know, there are, there are parcels that have sold for thousands, but they're usually on or really close to the water. So, it's a matter of the parcels that are out in the, the outlying areas are the ones that we're selling every year at the tax sale. And it's a problem. And there's, when people say, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, there's easily over a thousand lots out there, easily. And so every year, we're selling seventy to a hundred, and you take two hundred and fifty times a hundred, and that's not, that's not some change. And you're doing that every year. So, I'm just trying to fix a problem that I think is, it's going to have to be some legislative action to actually fix it, I think. I'm like, really positive that's what's going to have to happen. So, with, you know, your permission, I'll probably have the chairman and myself maybe reach out to some legislators and just, and with Patty too. She'll be involved and just try to figure out if we can find a solution to make this easier. If we have to have a sale in the Hen Valley every five years, you know, it'd be multiple lots. But at least we're, we're going to try to collect on more than a hundred and seventy bucks or, you know, eighty or ninety dollars. And we'll still do the same processes, but it won't have to be every year.
Do I entertain a motion?
I make my motion on that. I make a motion, we allow the county councilor and our chairman to work with their state legislature regarding the tax sales or tax items for Hen Valley lakes.
Here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am not going to mention the parcel that it's at, that is in dispute. But we do have a couple of cases percolating with, before the Board of Tax Appeals for the State of Kansas. We've done this before where we've hired a, a third-party, non-interested consultant to give us an opinion. I'm asking that we, that the commission give Clint's office the ability to hire this consultant. In prior experiences, it's been between five and six thousand dollars. So, I'd give him the authority to hire a consultant to come in and give us another appraisal on a, a commercial parcel here in our county that's currently going through the appeals process.
And we've done this before in the past?
We have.
And it, it was very beneficial?
It resolved the case.
It did resolve the case.
Yes. And we have, we have this one and probably another one that we're going to probably have to hire. I don't know if it'll go through the, get through the system by the end of this year, but it probably will. It'll be really close. But we'll probably have one for sure this fiscal year, two maybe for hiring a group to come in and give us a third-party appraisal.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve of hiring a third-party appraisal when needed for the upcoming appraisal problem that we're, that we've discovered.
For Clint's office. Clint would have the authority to hire.
It'd be with Clint's office, Clint Anderson's office, county appraiser. Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I need to set up some coma training probably within the next month or two. Oh, actually, I need it by the end of March. But I was wondering if you wanted to do it on just a Tuesday afternoon. It's an hour, hour and a half. It'll be on the screen most likely through Zoom. Zoom meeting. So, if I can get some dates from the AG's office and just, on a Tuesday afternoon after lunch, like one, one to two or one thirty to three.
Well, you can put that on the agenda.
Yeah, anybody, as long as I, I just want to make sure it was okay with you all.
This is me. How about you?
Good with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll set that up. And then I need a motion in order to sign the consent order. I know that Commissioner Harris and Clifton were not part of this, but I just need the clerk to certify it that we're going to need the training. So, I need a motion in order for Kendall basically to attest that we understand what the consent order is. And fulfilling, and fulfilling the order is basically getting the training.
Now, that's the consent order for the coma, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, I make a motion that we approve the, the consent order for the coma training. Do I hear a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do, I'm really, I really don't want to go into executive session for this, but I, I need ten minutes. There is, for attorney-client privilege, this is a possible litigation issue. I want to show you the paperwork and what's happening kind of through the system to give you an idea of what could be pending in the next couple of months. Give you a heads up now. I am going to talk about this in open session. It is litigation. But it is dealing with our opioid class action lawsuit that was filed. Geez, it's been a while ago, last year for sure.
Couple of years ago.
There are bankruptcies occurring at the commercial level with the different groups that supply the opioids through the commercial streams. This is Myoduct. It's a, one of the first ones that has actually was sued, and I guess judgments were rendered against them. They're in the bankruptcy proceedings at this point. We're tracking it. Our legal counsel that has been signed on to, to do this litigation is keeping us updated. So, we, we are receiving multiple correspondence of, of that going on. So, hopefully, we, we get some money from the judgment, but bankruptcies are interesting. It could be cents on the dollar. And there's lots and lots of parties involved, and this is a national bankruptcy, a national lawsuit. So, just keeping you apprised that this is still actively being pursued by our counsel.
So, are you all familiar with, with that, Paul? We, we'd done, we'd, a couple of years ago, we had voted to join a lawsuit, a national lawsuit for the opioid crisis. And they were, the, the outfit that we had hired or went in partnership with, they were responsible for doing the investigation, what impact it had on our county. So, what's going on now is, is a result of that, joining that lawsuit. And I don't know what the payout's going to be. I think it's kind of dwindled quite a little bit from what originally was slated to, to happen. But it's still ongoing.
Yeah, and there's multiple other parties that are being joined in the lawsuit. I mean, you watch the news and it, you can kind of keep track of it. So, I won't dive too deeply into that, but that's, that's active and ongoing. So, I'd ask for, I mean, we could probably do it in seven minutes, but it's kind of detailed. I mean, these, I got some information to disseminate, so probably ten minutes, and then I'll be done.
So, I move to go into executive session for ten minutes. KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two for a consultation with an attorney for a public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship discussing potential litigation.
The three commissioners and myself.
Three commissioners. Justin will be back at eleven, eleven twenty-five. Here a second?
Second.
Return back to this room. Have eleven twenty-five.
You need to vote on it.
I am. I'm going to. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Susan. So, I make a motion, we come out of executive session, eleven twenty-five, and no action. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Justin is done?
I think, I guess. Justin, you done?
Yes, commissioners, thank you.
Okay, open it up for public comments.
Okay, yeah, I guess mainly it was back to. Hold it down. My name is Ann Dare. I live here. The discussion regarding the dates and times of commission meetings, I think once a month is a good start. It didn't occur to me to do it on a Wednesday night. I guess the, one of the things there would be churches and just what church activities are, are happening at the moment, and I don't know what those are. I, I think the only one I really do know is the Nazarene Church does youth. But I don't know if there's anything adult-wise happening anywhere in town. I don't know. So, hopefully, those people that do know will let somebody know. But, and then the timing of it, as far as what time, no matter what day you pick, that you're going to have, somebody's going to gripe and complain about it, and I'm sorry about that. Just the timing of, of what you pick. Do you intend, there were several things being booted around. Do you intend to say on that day, meet at whatever time, say it's three o'clock, and go ahead and conduct official business, but then public comments left for later? Or, I guess my intention, when you, when you move a meeting to, to the, to an evening time, that you would still be doing all of this, starting at whatever time you start, you know? And still following the format and county council and public comments and all that. Location would be another thing you would have to consider. And depending on that location, what's going to have to happen with the recording and YouTube and all of that. So, I, you know, I would like to see an evening meeting once a month start. If all of those other things can be relatively worked out in some sort of fashion, I don't know.